Team at six o'clock, we will call the board of trustees, meeting's order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Sure you take roll call?
Sparks?
Here.
Zagami?
Here.
Ermeling?
Here.
Ziegler?
Here.
Maloney?
Here.
Jean?
Here.
Feeny?
Here.
Public comments, is there anybody in the audience who would like to make any public comments on anything that's not on the agenda? No? Okay, hearing none. We'll go to presentations, item number four, exploration of creating a community kitchen food scrap drop-off program at the village in partnership and collaboration with Hughes Growing Supply and Marathon County Solid Waste Department. Valerie?
This is you. Just introduce yourself quick. So Deb Shaw from Sue's Growing Supply over in the woods on the side. And Chelsea Hadstary, most of you may know, she's our producer since when Andrew. And shall I go into detail or should I ask the questions?
I would probably do a little brief explanation for people in the audience too.
Sure. So basically this is just to introduce the concept, get your blessing to do a food scrap recycling program, a drop-off program here. So basically, trying to be brief, back in 2014, we went for a single-street recycling program. There were a lot of people that had contacted us back then about what to do with the food scraps, because some people actually thought that they're supposed to put the food scraps in their recycling bins, which they weren't. And so I know over time, we've kind of touched on the topic of doing home composting or food scraps program, but nothing up came of it. And earlier this year, I was helping out at the Chamber Expo, and that's where I met Deb Shaw. And she had mentioned with Sue's Growing Supply, how they do all kinds of home composting, like taking all food scraps and yard waste and they create compost. And then, so we were, I had a chat with her about what's correct. And then, so in June, we had our home compost event. It was me and Chelsea and Kelly at Lincoln. She's representing Marathon County Solid Waste and Recycling Connections Corporation. And so we, she and I got to talking. Well, first of all, as I think I've mentioned in the past, that event was great. We had a lot of people that came out and were asking questions and buying home composters, but people that just wanted to know what they can do as far as keeping food scraps out of the landfill. And so, and so that sparked the discussion again with Deb to see what we could do to maybe just kind of start talking about the idea of a food scrap drop-off program. And so we've, I guess, the thought is to have some kind of a, like a bin somewhere located here where it can be monitored and maybe like outside of, out of view from the general public, where residents can come and drop off their food scraps. And then, periodic basis, we would have Sue's Food Supply come and they would collect the bin, leave us an empty one and continue on. So, the purposes of this, obviously, if, so food scraps in the landfill, it creates methane gases, although a program like this would be very, very small and it's not going to, it's not going to dramatically change anything, but it can lead to something bigger. Reduce the amount of food tonnage going to landfills, although again, it'd be a very small amount. Let's see.
If I may, one of the initiatives at Sue's this year is to work with the public to help them recognize how much food waste goes to landfill. So depending on which numbers and who you believe, anywhere from 20 to 40 percent of the food that we grow or purchase ends up going to waste. The majority of that ends up in the landfill. So our goal is to make people aware of it, and one of the first things we want to do is get people to be aware of it so they can reduce the amount they're creating. If we can't reduce the amount that's being created, let's divert it to proper places or to go. And then if we still can't do that, then let's take those wastes and turn them into something that can be reused as beneficial. So keeping this out of the landfill does save the landfill space and the cost that it creates to mitigate landfills. You know, the methane gas is an issue, but there's, it's a small amount in the whole big scheme of things, like Valerie is saying, but for all of us, if we're all a part of it, then it helps keep a lot of this out of the landfill. So at Sue's, what we are doing with this initiative is going out and approaching people, businesses, homeowners, and saying, let us help, let us take that product instead of it getting trucked to landfill or in some cases out of the area. Let's keep it right here, keep it local, and let us turn it back into a usable product that people then can again reuse again and again. So that's our goal and that's our initiative. With this, we see a program in that, again, as Valerie mentioned, we would come and pick up the product, we supply the containers, we would come pick it up on a regular basis, and then we would take it out to our site where we are licensing our compost facility. So we are also part of the U.S. Composting Council, and we have very strict standards, compost standards that we use to make our compost. So then we would take the material, make compost, and then exchange empty clean bins then for the ones that are here. So everybody who is a part of this then can feel better about living in Weston, being part of a green tier. This helps them recognize that even as a little individual person, whether it's an apartment or a homeowner who may not be able or want to compost on their site, they can still be doing their part to turn this material that otherwise ended up in the landfill into something more valuable and useful, not only for us locally, but for the green world in general.
So that will generate methane for you too? What you do with that?
The methane that is created, and for many landfills that is actually collected and then can be sold for burning for heat.
Now, what you do with it?
We don't deal with the methane because of our composting situation. We don't generate the methane that the landfill does. So we are not a landfill, we are a compost facility. So in the breakdown process, the way that we handle it, the methane is not created. So we don't have to deal with methane, it's not there.
Are you doing any restaurants currently?
No, we are starting to work with them at this time. This is also an early initiative. We would like to, coming into a restaurant situation, it's a much larger volume, and there's post and pre-consumer composting issues that we need to work through and kind of solve some of this currently. And for many years, we have taken from Santa Max and other large places like Walmart, we've taken food scraps also from the food industry processing that happens around Stevens Point and Dover. So we have the ability and the knowledge to work with this. We've already verified with the DNR that this will not affect our licensing in any way. We are a grade A compost facility, and this product will be allowed into our facility and not change our licensing.
So I saw no eggshells and no meat products, right? Those are the two I think I saw?
Generally, eggshells are acceptable. Generally, it's meat, dairy, and oils.
Okay.
Those are the three things that we discourage.
Okay, I thought, when I was reading this, I thought, I thought the dairy was okay. I thought the meat and eggshells was.
Minor amounts.
Maybe you got something here. So what happens, you know, I know right now with the problems we're having with the yellow containers, or when we had that meeting with, with our recycling, you know, that, something put in there metal and cardboard and the whole thing is contaminated. So what happens when meat go in there or bones go in there or something like that?
Minor amounts of those things are perfectly compostable in our situation.
Okay.
Again, we have checked with the DNR to make sure this is good. If we were doing purposes and large volumes were on cook meat, that would then invalidate our license, but at this point, we don't expect that to be an issue. But that goes with the education to teach people what is, you know, and is not acceptable.
Just help me out, I'm at home, whether it's a family of five or a family of two. Tell me, how often do you see someone as a resident bringing this to the site? How do they collect it at home? Do they leave it in the refrigerator? You know?
Probably get little, we have seen people using like little ice cream pails.
Okay, yep, yep.
And then once it gets cold.
So you get to dump it, and then you get to come home. So, so an ice cream pail, but then you're driving to the event and stuff. So I just want to say something that I grew up with. My grandfather in North Dakota, I used to just watch him as a kid, you know, with those little paper, plastic milk cartons. So he'd always cut the top off, so he always had one of those sitting there. And all, everything went in there, coffee grounds, eggs, everything. And every night after dinner, he would go outside, I'd follow him out there, and he'd have a shovel in his garden or yard, and he'd just turn it over, throw it in and put that back in, move the shovel once a day. And I mean, his whole, his yard was unbelievable, probably because of that, you know?
And then one thing with this program too, is there are a lot of people out there that would like to do composting, but maybe they are intimidated by the idea of doing it in their own yard, or maybe they've got a really small yard and they don't want to or they don't time to, so this gives them the option of knowing that they're not putting it in the landfill and they're, they've got a safe place to bring it in. And again, this is just, we're just looking at this as kind of a pilot project, we're just going to start small. So we still have to vet some of this stuff out, we just want to see if it's okay, if this, if you guys have the interest for us, or if it's okay for us to go forward with it.
Is anywhere else in the area that's doing it now? You brought up Point.
Point is doing it, Madison is doing it, Green Bay's doing it.
Are you working with Point?
Uh, no, no.
Okay. So nothing around here currently?
Correctly, correct.
But people can drop off at your site, O N W?
Yes, absolutely. We've been doing that for a while.
Because I've seen, I go by there a lot and I see the signs here.
Yep, absolutely. Anytime you choose.
I have a couple of questions. The first, the first one's just a question, the other ones are, I guess, more about our system in here. The first one is, if we, you know, if we have a look, if we had a container here and people were bringing it up, you know, bringing their leftover scraps, and I think we wouldn't be violating any health policy, would we? Our facility here specifically?
No, I'm going to move it off of that, it's something we would investigate further.
Okay. And then the second question I just have is, I'm kind of just trying to understand our system here. Do, so if someone wants to introduce something, like an idea, it comes to the board first and then it goes to committee? Or does it go through the committee system first and then come to the board for final approval?
Well, I think probably, probably would generally go through the committee first, but we just figured we would just kind of, just kind of get your initial thoughts before we spend more time getting on this.
Well, I think that's a, that'd be a matter of perhaps maybe some direction from the board here, I think, because that's, at times, we don't know what committee maybe should be seeing in particular item, and that's why maybe we bring it to the board first and have the, have it assigned to a committee.
Well, I guess, you know, run it by the board if it's something brand new.
Well, just to get a general feeling, I respect this process right now, because if you get a negative response, why go through all that and come through a committee or whatever and then bring it here when you can kind of get a feel right now? What worries me is our time, our labor. I think I read in there about monitoring it or checking on it. I mean, how often does that, I mean, I know it's a little bit, I know it doesn't sound like a lot, but it's one more editing.
Yep. And I guess I just envision that we'd have, like the card the size of what you'd have for your garbage recycling, and we'd keep it kind of tucked away somewhere where it's not visible to the general public. And basically, like anybody, first we'd put out some dealers to the public and say, hey, are you interested in this? So contact me. And then I would kind of give them the location, because we would want all of a sudden everybody just start going here and throwing other stuff in there.
I just want to pull us back to the discussion about the system, because I just don't think that the board, you know, I personally think the committees should be the ones kind of filtering it out, otherwise we're going to get a whole bunch of requests at the county, at the, at the village board level here. And I just don't want to be, you know, to be, I think we need to do more oversight from, you know, from different sites, but that's just my two cents, you know, throwing this in there. I think it should be the committees that does it. And I, and the question I was going to ask originally was, has this been brought to the public works and utility, but then I read in there saying that it was going, you were asking for the, kind of in a sense, the blessing of the kind of the village board first before it gets brought up to the committee, but that's just my two cents there.
Well, what Minister Donner just brought up is where do they take it? Which one, which committee does take it? Mark? I'm sorry, Mal.
Well, I don't know, Hushain, did you, you had, I know we both were kind of, go ahead, why don't you go and?
No, I'm all right. Although here, they said we'd recommend send it to public board.
That's, that's what I was thinking as well, because there was already a committee that they're thinking of bringing up to already. So I would assume that would go to that committee prior to it coming to the, to the village board.
I guess my question, and it's kind of Mark touched on it, is I'm concerned about the staff time and what would the cost be besides staff time to the village?
Yeah, so that's one of the things that we would need to discuss further with Sue's to find out, because obviously, there's going to be a couple of containers involved when they, they'll swap the, the one with the empty one.
Right.
And then there, obviously, their cost to haul it back to their site.
So the actual question though, right now, is yea or nay? If anybody is, you know, seriously against it, I've got some thoughts about it, but I certainly wouldn't want to stand in the way of it or being addressed and looked at and thought about. So I think right now, if we just say yea or nay, and then go to the committee and do all the process, I would, we can't, we're not going to give you an answer here until it gets vetted like you said. Right? I mean, that's really what this is about. It's, we're not really here to, because she can't give us no cost, nobody can yet, until they pursue it and investigate a little bit more.
Can I ask another question? I know that you listed-
I didn't mean to do that, Barb, I'm sorry, I jumped on top of you.
I know that you listed a couple of other programs that are being done at other municipalities. I guess, and for example, like the Milwaukee one, you said it was a pilot program that started in 2016. Are those programs still happening today, and so how successful are they?
They're still going on, and they have been proven successful. The only one that was kind of rocky was Madison. They kind of started too big, too big of a pilot area, had too many homes. So they actually just started their second pilot program, which is something that'll last eight weeks, and then they're going to see how the contamination, plastic issue is. But otherwise, Milwaukee, Stevens Point, and Brown County have been going on well, successful.
UWQW also does a very similar program as well.
I have to yield back to Barb, I'm sorry.
Well, I guess, yeah, I, if it's going to go back to committee, because my questions would be, you know, is there a smell? How airtight are these containers? I mean, if you're throwing food in there in the middle of summer, winter might not be so bad, but I'm not so sure about, you know?
Well.
The summer, the smell, and, I mean, and like you, I, they can't handle just plain recycling. You know, what you should put in recycling bins, I have concern, you know?
That's why we keep it, we put it in.
Part of, part of what we're talking about here is educating people, just like educating in recycling. So it's a different aspect of it. So that's one of the reasons for starting small. The programs that have been started around the state, one of the issues they've had is contamination, which Valerie brought up. And what that is, is simply things that are put into that compost bin that cannot be composted. And so it's very much like you're recycling, things end up in there that shouldn't be and can't be recycled, and it all ends up going to garbage. It's the same with compost. That's part of the education, and Weston does an excellent job of educating its people. You're always going to have some issues with those things, and then on the opposite end of it, we would be dealing with those then. Again, Madison as a community, they had a very small program, big compared to some others, but that was one of their concerns. So there are ways around this, but a lot of it is education, which Weston already does a lot of, and works with their community for these programs, and that's bringing through legacy gift and commitment. Now, your comment about smell, is there a smell? There is some. I'll be honest, they are, they are closed, but not sealed containers, but that can change. And then the product is picked up on a very regular basis, so if you have had anything like compost in your home, you know that if not properly taken care of and properly sealed, yes, you're going to have that. But that's minimized by taking it out of here on a regular basis. Now, some programs do it once a week, some programs do it twice a month, it just varies with the program. That's one thing we have to figure out, and that'll go back toward the cost side of it. So what there are also things to do, the other thing that comes up is what about flies? This is an organic product that's breaking down. There may be some, but again, there are good, safe, organic ways to deal with some of those things. But no matter whether it's a hamburger somebody throws on the floor, or whether it's compost bin, you do have to address some of those issues, so those are very valid concerns. And those are things that can be worked on and minimized, if not, you know, prevented altogether. I guess myself, I think, yeah, you should take this to a committee, that you can get some costs and, I, I'm not saying it's not a good idea, I just, well, budget. I mean, that's money that, if it's going to cost us more money, I'm just not sure at this point. But that, like I said, I, it can go to a committee, I don't have a problem if they can review some of this.
Now, I'll dovetail on, Barb, I have one question and one comment. One, and the question is, you know, how is this funded? Are you expecting any money from the municipality to do this, or simply a space to locate it? And as my comment is, as I read through, it said, you know, village staff is going to monitor and educate people, provide educational materials, staff would conduct initial outreach via the newsletter, website next door, Facebook, in-person outreach at the farmer's market. We just went through a budget discussion prior to this, and we're talking about how do we even maintain existing services? So I struggle with adding another program on that's going to take staff time when we're already stretched. And that's probably my biggest concern, it's maybe a great idea, and I certainly don't have any issues with it, but I just think, as I read into this, I think staff is going to be, because it's going to be here, that's going to be the kind of contact, they're going to be talking to people. And I worry about our staff being able to, you know, be diverted from their primary duties for a pilot program.
Maybe they could advertise in our newspaper and tell them that they could bring, if they had, they could bring it to your facility. Yes, yes. And we welcome any and all questions. You know, that to me would make more sense. One of the reasons that we brought up these ideas on how to communicate and how to educate people is that is what has been successfully used in other communities. You have very, very valid concerns about the cost to the community when in a situation it's a tight budget for everybody. So we would at least recognize that you have very valid concerns, would like to see if there may be some other alternatives, different ways we could present this that would minimize the cost to then the community's value.
So, and that's not mentioned in here, so are you proposing a cost to the municipalities for this?
There would be a cost, it has not been determined because the extent of the program has not been developed. Sue's would be taking on the responsibility of the containers and the pickup and the disposal of the product. Above and beyond that, that's open for discussion at this time. So what we're thinking about at this point, again, this is very early in the stages, is just a location where this can be put, and one that's discreet, so that some of the issues you're talking about do not bother other people. And when we're talking about a monitored site, we're saying a site that has somebody that oversees it, and my understanding is already an existing gated place, because one of the issues I discussed earlier is contamination. People bringing in products that don't belong in there, oh, this is just garbage, let's throw it in there. The reason for the gated or, or monitored is to just minimize and discourage people from doing that exact thing.
Is DNR continually thinking to the project? I apologize, I'm sorry.
Nate's been raising his hand or something.
That's all right. When you've said that some of these other locations have been successful, I'm really curious as to how you would quantify success and what happens if this proves an unsuccessful program?
So if it's unsuccessful, then we would just stop it. This is just a, we're concerned this is just a pilot program, just to test it out for safety. But I guess as far as quantifying, it being, it's working out, it would be, it would be a matter of how many interested residents we've got. I know when we were talking with Brown County, he said that they had a, they had kind of a goal they wanted to reach as far as quantifying that, and then it's going to fluctuate, but we just want to try and just kind of start small and kind of get the, get the feedback from the residents, see if she wants to participate and, so, and I guess maybe ultimately it would become something bigger, and then we'd have to look at other sites as far as keeping a container. Or maybe at that point in time, that would lead to curbside collection of the, or the food waste. So I guess that would be another way to quantify that.
Well, with this program specifically, how many people or how many businesses do you think we would need in order to count this as successful, or what tonnage?
And I suppose it would depend on, well, first of all, one thing we're talking about doing, just to, just to kind of keep people engaged and to, and their commitment, be just a one-time, like registration. And then, we would not, we would not go with commercial, it would just be simply residential, they don't want to create this massive amount, and their restaurants would be just, they have to go.
Independent.
Yes, so we'd be just looking at residential right now.
Okay. So do you have a ballpark for the number of people? Fifty people, 100 people?
Well, we're thinking like a dozen people.
Okay.
But again, it'll, it would all come down to when they factor, or figure their numbers out, and say, maybe we realize, okay, we need to have 30 people to, to make this work out, as far as cost, so.
Okay.
The outside cost.
Thank you.
Your question about how is this going to be judged successful in amount is by the amount of product that does not then going to the landfill.
Okay.
And that is how we judge what we are doing as well, what are we saving from landfill, whether that be yard waste or food scraps or brush, things like that. That's our indicator of how successful we're being, and that would be the same thing here, how much product is not going to the landfill.
Okay. So there's no benchmark for the success of the pilot program yet in terms of poundage?
I think that's something, no, correct.
Okay.
Because it will depend on how many people sign up for it, and each household is an individual as to how much they will send to a compost versus a yard waste. For example, at my house, I'm a bit of a recycling Nazi, so I have a small container on the counter, and we regularly dump that into a bigger container once a day. For many households, it's a five gallon bucket a week, could be more, could be less, but that volume will depend on how many people sign up to participate, and then how extensive they are with their control of the product going in.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, I'm going to make a motion to refer this pilot program back to the, to the Public Works and Utility Committee for further discussion and consideration. I feel that we don't have enough information to actually really go forward with this, you know, so I would, so I'm going to make that motion to refer it to the Public Works and the Utility Committee for further discussion.
Okay, we have a motion, John, seconded by Barb. Question, final question.
Does DNR have to hold particular expense?
I'm sorry.
Or grant, is there grant money available through DNR?
I do not know. Grant money is usually not available to commercial entities like ourselves. Nonprofits, yes, but that is a great question that we can pursue, but generally speaking, grant money for this is not available to private businesses.
Or what, Marathon County, Marathon County land?
We are working with Marathon County, and that would be a question from Lisa, that is something we certainly would-
Well, it should, because you're decreasing the waste and giving more space, so.
Right.
Help you, you should help you.
It seems like that would work that way. But they are willing to support us in several things and several aspects of this. We have not talked a minute about financially if that is something that would change for them and for us.
All right, thank you.
Anything else on the question? Okay, we have a motion. If they would say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried, this will be referred to the Public Works.
Thank you.
Okay, the next presentation is John Walcamp from Union Architects on Municipal Facilities Project Presentation.
Good evening.
Evening.
Well, the goal for this evening is kind of bringing up the speed, it's been quite a few months since we've been here in front of you. We've been working with staff and really our goal today is to show you what we've collected and kind of get your input from there and we'll keep moving. This is just a high-level schedule that we put together maybe three, four months ago, starting from benchmarking tours and pretty much the point we're at right now is kind of meeting three with the board. Our goal after tonight is to kind of get your feedback where we'd actually do a more presentation to the public to see where we're at. When we presented last time, we pretty much mentioned the program was dictated just from the master program that we did in 2016 and we still needed to go back and talk with staff on what spaces needed to be within the program, which spaces could be deleted. These program sheets just showed documentation that we'd met with staff. We kind of highlighted all the different areas, what still needed to be in the building for today and in the future. So the program you're gonna see tonight with the different layouts pretty much took that documentation to build the floor plans that we came up with. The one thing that that program did, it showed that originally we had about 99,000 square feet, around about 100,000 square feet that was needed for the facility. Where actually now that we got the actual program document done, the facility's gonna be anywhere from 90,000 to 95,000 square feet. So handful either 5,000 to 10,000 square feet have been saved in the program, which is saved on building square footage. The fluctuation in square footage really only has to do with basically which scheme option we actually use. Starting with the public safety, this is one piece that we've worked with staff, with the chief, fire and police. High-level review of this, evidence storage, we're gonna have two major areas for evidence storage, dog holding, indoor parking for the squad units. So we right now have 12 locations inside that building that we would take advantage for storage of vehicles. That's using all 100% existing square footage of the building, no additions. Secured lobby, training and fitness in the fire area, redo the trench drains and upgrade the ventilation system. Second level fire, we're gonna build out the sleeping rooms on second level. Currently, there's multi-room shared by multi-firefighters, so we're gonna have five rooms. One of the rooms in the corner will have the two beds, so you're gonna have areas for six for sleeping. That'll also include new toilet shower area on the upper level also. The upper area of that plan, we're gonna have a new training area, day room and kid share, which is kind of one large open concept, not that, a lot of the utilities that are up there right now are kind of just up and out in the open. Those will be enclosed into utility closets. This is the slide existing, pretty much showed you what you had on site, we're at this site now. If you remembered originally, the master program did show acquiring some land to the, I'll say the west, northwest. We all agreed that within the red is the footprint we want to use, which is around eight acres of site. The yellow was kind of showing you what the area of the actual proposed building square footage, 100,000 square foot to take up of the site. So almost a quarter of the site was taken up with just building footprint, which kind of created a little bit of a challenge to come up with what we feel is the kind of the best layout for the site.
Current building size, all buildings is what?
Thirty, thirty-three.
Thirty-three, okay, all right, got it.
This was the original floor plan that we presented to you, which included, like I said, everything, the wish list. And now we dialed that back down and saving anywhere's between 5,000 to 10,000 square feet on top of that. This slide.
Approximately how much, where did that 5 or 10 come from? Office or?
It's really a mix of everything, office. As you see these different configurations, you'll see actually some have, the darker hatch is a loop drive. So we save square footage on what I call drive aisle space. Some are office spaces. The master scheme we ended up going with ends up going to a two-level office space. So it helped us save footprint square footage, but efficiency and building layout too. So the number you're seeing, the two is just represented in the floor plan. The next two digits after the decimal there is the options. So pretty much the team went through 15 different options to dial in similar to what we're saying we feel is a real workable plan. Each one of these options, we tried to make sure it was a workable option. If you remember the programming, the programming plan, we were telling you rooms weren't necessarily adjacent to where they should be. These plans did get the rooms adjacent as much as possible. This is just a high level showing you the different options.
Can we just ask?
Yeah, for sure.
So, so the seafoam green is kind of, say it's the same, the blue thing moves around a little bit. The offices stay up in the top, you know, the bottom right corner.
Yep.
But that tan section keeps floating around. Well, just, just in a, what is, describe the tan section.
Yeah, so the tan is, the tan is, in the final scheme outlook, the tan is actually just shops.
Oh, okay.
So, just high level, green is vehicle parking.
Yep.
Orange is repair, blue is wash related.
Okay.
All the others is kind of office function anyways.
Yep, okay.
And in working with staff, there was adjacencies even with those high-level pieces. For example, talking to the mechanics in the repair bay, we wanted the wash phase adjacent to the orange.
Right.
So you can see in some cases, they're, in all these, all the one, they're all or two are close to the orange, but there's pros and cons, we had to work with each plan.
And the repair is accessible to the parking area, all six sides?
The parking area and the exterior.
Okay, and exterior, right, okay.
These are just more options. These options really went to where we ended up going to a second level.
Office only?
Office only. And the major functions that we felt could move to the office, talking with staff, was zoning and planning and zoning, IT and finance. Pretty much all the other functions we felt for the adjacency to the public were there. Planning and zoning, we have it where the individuals that need to see residents have quick access right downstairs to a meeting conference room right adjacent to a main stair. Components, this ended up being one of the schemes that there was a lot of debate how this facility lays out onto the site, meaning is it parallel to Schofield? Is it parallel to municipal? You got multiple angles going on here. Just high level, we had to fit a salt structure on there for 5,000 tons of salt, a fuel island and storage bins for bulk material that staff uses every day. Long-term storage would stay out of Ryanville. So this was one option, kind of, it works. But the biggest thing it does, it gives us a very good working yard. It gives a good presence on Schofield as a municipal building. Parking is a little, we feel this will work well.
Where's the fuel?
Fuel is the darker blue in the right, upper right.
Okay, so it's a drive-by?
Yep.
So it's all the vehicles and safety too?
Yep.
Safety's gonna fuel there, okay.
Yep, so fuel needs to be studied a little bit because of the well situation, municipal well to the north. So we gotta, we're trying to dig into the codes and the requirements there. But we think we got plenty of areas for green space for stormwater retention, treatment, it'll work on the site. We are showing an option where salt storage is on the north side of the road there. We're just showing that because if we go with any option prior to these where the site is more linear to municipal, we're gonna have to move the salt structure out of the yard, there just isn't enough space. If we keep it parallel to either municipal or Schofield, it works well in the backyard.
With the cost of fuel and underground, above ground, whatever, how many of your facilities that you have participated in are fuel on-site versus contracted with somebody that knows fuel and that's all they do?
Ninety percent of them will put fuel on-site. The bigger thing is they do it, they size it properly so they can take a full load, so 8,000 gallon or.
Yep.
If you don't do that, you're paying up charges, you're paying, so really it's the infrastructure that you put in place, that's where you're gonna save the money. And if you do it big enough and there's, then you can somewhat actually play with the market yourself and buy fuel and be notified when fuel is low and you fill your tanks. So most of our clients will do it that way. So whether we go to 12,000 gallon tanks or 8,000, minimum we'd recommend is 8,000, just for you to get a full truck.
So we're specialized to play the market?
Yeah.
We buy $2 million a year in fuel and we are not specialized to play the market?
Sure.
And we run 24 semis daily?
Yep.
And we have two contractors and 95% of our product comes from one.
Yeah, what we've run case studies is trucking, other have the ability to dispatch and fill elsewhere. It's really analyzing the time spent if I know I gotta go to ABC fueling station before I come in to fuel. Those are usually the tricky things. Bottom line, the other thing I think is, I always say is, you know, you are the first line of defense if something happens in the community. Those stations can all close down.
Well, that's, I mean, that's a scare tactic.
Yeah. Oh, no, I'm just saying the reasons why we analyze it, but the bigger thing is running the dollars and cents of manpower running in fuel at different times.
Can we just keep that component of the whole fuel, just make sure that's always stays isolated?
Oh, great.
Okay.
So all these components you see, the fuel, the salt, the bins, will be definitely bid as separate line items.
Just so we know how each component works, okay?
You will always be able to see the cost impact of that to make sure whatever the dollar amount is makes sense to western to do. Yep, for sure.
I'm gonna be quiet, go ahead.
No.
You don't need to be quiet.
This is the floor plan layout, the upper left is the second level of the office layout, the bottom right is the first floor plan. This option here, which is actually option 14, the previous one was option 15, is kind of the option we're recommending because I think it gives a better presence of how we can break up the parking lot, how we can put some stormwater to the south of the facility to deal with the drainage. Just the high level, the bullet colors down here, the dark blue is employee parking area, the green is kind of public parking, the yellow is public entry, the red is employee entry. So we're really cutting the entry points down. The public has one entry point to this building and at all times that entire lobby, which is a modest grand two-story space, can be locked down for whether it's board meetings or the rooms rented out for whatever reason, that lobby can be locked down for that and be self-contained, nobody can get throughout the building. There again, the salt facility is laid out the same way. The fuel, which isn't shown on here, would be located the same thing, it's kind of. The different buildings, all I'm doing is showing here is that I think with the site being skewed a little bit, you can take advantage of the architecture on skewing the site. So really the big thing I'm looking for tonight is, does the board have a strong feeling of parallel out to Schofield or if we're okay with the skewed to Schofield? Interestingly, now if you start looking, everything to our west, the next few buildings are all skewed to Schofield, to the east are skewed. It's, if the road starts to curve right outside on the glass, so it kind of naturally I think blended the different facilities to do that. So.
Is that lobby has a skylight?
I'm excuse me?
The lobby has a skylight?
The lobby, whether it's a skylight or whether it's clear story lighting is still to be seen, but it will definitely have natural lighting that'll be ribboned to bring over because the second level will also look within that lobby area space. So if you're up in what I call second level, like planning and zoning area, you'll be able to look down like a railing and kind of see down below.
Three access points to the green? And I see the one access, I see the other one, and then one to the yard also, right?
To the green, oh, yeah, yes.
Does the green have three access points?
Yes.
And then of course the shop, you can sneak through the shop too.
Yeah, so what the green does is you, the upper right.
I see it.
The upper right green is a smaller, what we ended up doing is try to look at the architecture and the structure of the place. The upper right green are all smaller vehicles, so 20 to 25-foot stall bays or 10 to 25-foot stall bays. And everything in the long left-to-right scheme is the larger plows and things. So we've kind of separated those vehicles. And then the orange, there again, that's repair bay. Working with staff there, whether all the doors are drive-through, we're still analyzing the pros and cons because overhead doors there, you're losing wall space. But we wanted to take advantage of the repair base still being, or use the wash bays and the traffic flow patterns. This seems to work really well, or scheme 15. This is the smallest footprint of the site at 85,000, 83,000 square feet.
Including the second level?
No, footprint, the upper levels add 10, so you're at, you're at 90, essentially 90, um.
94?
4,100.
I see it there.
Yeah. But footprint-wise, all the others prior were single-story and they were about 100,000 square foot footprint. Different pieces of architecture that we showed staff just to get a feel for what levels of quality lighting. These are just some interior finishes that we've shared with staff. Wash bays, mechanic bays, so they, our goal is to make sure when they're looking at the spaces, they truly understand and try to feel what's actually in the space. And each one of these, I kind of went over pros and cons. Like the one with that welding arm there, to me there's a pros and con that that's specifically for task welding. How often it happens there, a lot of times what we'll do is put a larger exhaust field just up top so you can take advantage of the larger footprint area.
Is there a supply mezzanine?
Excuse me?
In our tour, we saw a lot of supply mezzanines?
Yep.
Parks and stuff upstairs and versus the down?
Yep.
So, in one of these too?
In our schemes here.
Yep.
So if you look at the orange, the center orange, and you can kind of see a smaller area. The smaller area where there's a, between the blue.
Got it.
Center left of the blue, there's an area there that you'll have about 60 feet of mezzanine storage for the repair bay.
Okay.
Over on the right-hand side, the shops, and in the red, you'll have full mezzanine storage over the top of that. The nice thing for that is the second floor office piece is directly attached to that, so in the future for expansion, could go down for that mezzanine and take over for office sort of, if you need it. Just a couple trends and things that we shared with staff on office space. A lot of office layouts are going where if we have an open concept, they get the outside windows first. And then the inner offices are glass walls overlooking, so there's some of this concept that we're using within the plan. This is the opposite scheme where if the office is on the exterior, they still have glass so everybody in the interior sees the transparency and the natural light. Different lobbies, area that we've talked about. Our goal is to kind of show off what you do here, that any entry point that you can look down and see the vehicles, take advantage of different views and visibility. Here's a meeting room right off the main lobby. You know, our goal is not to get the public deep into the facility, but have plenty of meeting spaces right adjacent to the entry point. The, I think the entry point is a big thing here, how, exactly how we secure that and but still give a good image of we have security, but, you know, we're open for business. More questions?
Just one question, exterior stuff that you have, like just some impulse and.
Exterior stuff that you have, like just cement poles and stuff to prevent people from driving vehicles, you know, through the, from the building and stuff, I assume?
Yeah, once we get farther into the... If we pick one of these layouts, then we'll finally get all those details exactly how that entry is not like the old-fashioned way where it's right off the parking lot, right in, you know, how a planter box or pounds, a thing that's fit into the architecture. We talked a little bit also about the drop-off box, the display boards outside, having that all part of the architecture so it doesn't look like a tack-on piece afterwards. Yep.
You're talking about like security valyries?
Yep. So you don't drive into the building.
Those red cement balls that tariff uses are made right down the street?
Yeah, perfect.
That'd be kind of cool.
I wish it had a safety building too.
For the whole country.
Just a question. I know the last time you presented to us that you had some quotes on how much this facility would cost, but the reduction of, I think you used to mention about fifteen thousand square foot, if I'm understanding that correct? Five to ten thousand?
Five to ten thousand, yeah.
How much, what is the cost expected for something for this facility?
Really, I haven't run the final cost, but I think we're still in the original numbers that we were talking about for the facility. Because as we perfect the plan, we'll be able to dial in those costs. So I'm not really in a position tonight to throw costs, but if you guys are liking what the team is coming up with, by the next meeting, we'll have those costs laid out here. But we don't see it over the last numbers that were presented. I think we were talking, it was between twelve to fourteen, what it stopped last time.
Are those three retention ponds?
That's what you're showing. I don't know what it would end up being. I guess that's still...
One guy put a soul to them, sure.
We were just showing areas that can be taken, take advantage of.
Yeah. What does, what does everyone think on the street placement?
Correlate to Schofield Avenue, my opinion.
You do?
Yes.
Well, I was just wondering, is it actually, I know the footprint is where you're making the savings. Is there any savings by going two-story versus spread out? Somebody once told me it's cheaper to go up than to walk, so.
Really, usually the rule of thumb of why to go up is because you don't have land or land's too expensive.
Okay.
So to say, is it cheaper to go up? I don't want to say that. I think the square footage is probably about the same in our case.
Okay.
But I think what it gives us an advantage here is everything behind the red, which is office function, is tall.
Yeah.
So this really gives us an opportunity to create a mass on Schofield of the civic... You know, this is our municipal center. This thing, you know what I mean? It can give us a nice mass cost-effectively. As part of the architecture, it just naturally allows us to do that.
Are those all shared roof lines?
No.
Okay, they're not.
Yeah. At this point, the green typically is around a twenty-eight foot high. The orange is thirty-four, thirty-six. And the red, red at a two-story would be the same as the green height.
Okay.
Yep.
So pretty close.
Yep. Yep, if it goes two-story, otherwise that red typically would be about sixteen if it was a one-story.
Now, what works better as far as the building placements and the ponds and everything else if it's on the Schofield or which?
Better, either option works. I think it's more of a preference what you do. And if you want, we could do some animations to kind of show us the feelable. I like this option more, but...
But this option can't fit parallel. It can only...
This option does not fit.
Right.
Oh, boy.
Right. Because, I mean, it's designed right there.
Yep.
Just show us the other, oh, so that's the other option for parallel.
Yep. And it's not much difference. What happens is the vehicle parking, the small vehicle parking, which was in upper right, moved to the bottom line.
But you lose all that, the right side, you know, you've got all those odd shapes over there.
Yep.
But having it at an angle, kind of an angle, you're still getting the looks of the building from Schofield Avenue. I mean, I actually kind of like the...
I like the difference of it. I like the...
Well, I don't like parking right in front of here.
The angled one rolls more parking.
Yeah, and we can, we'll have more islands than that in here, but you will be crowding Schofield with parking just to feel it, get the numbers and everything to get in.
I like it at an angle, actually.
Okay, where do we go from here?
You're okay with having maybe two options? Or you want, or you want a direction on the layout that the board wants here tonight?
The best would be if you truly had a feel that it was fine on an angle or... We'd like that direction. To create a whole building rendition of what it's going to look like for two options, it's going to be pretty tough. But I'd be happy to do it if you said, you know, you can't make a decision. Our goal is to make sure we do it right.
I don't mean to say this, but we did, we just did this last week with CDA and planning and we did a straw poll on color and the staff got the vote before us. So I just want to ask, did staff get the vote first yet? And then what was the outcome if they did get the vote?
Staff did not see this option. This just trickled down...
Which one, the parallel one?
The parallel one.
So right now, you're all thinking the angled one, right?
That was the last one I showed.
That you saw?
Yeah, we did not review this as a team.
So then, I would entertain just my one person if we would get a straw poll? Or, Shane, would you agree or no?
I think we should show off the building. That's just my opinion. I'd like to show off the building. And when you drive through Schofield Avenue, you should be able to see the building. You put the building at the angle and you don't see that. You don't, if you go and get the, you're going to the eastbound, you don't see that effect. You're going to the westbound, you can't see it possibly.
You know, and I would agree with you, and we're, I want to agree with everybody, but anyway. But last week, we had the CDA in his planning and Roffers, Mark Roffers, really got my interest when he was showing all these different options around the village, just options. And everything was so different. It wasn't square to the road. It wasn't, you know, as we all think it should be or what we were used to. I mean, he was showing some really wild developments, different things, you know, across from different places. And I kind of liked that, I may be saying the wrong thing, but recklessness. What am I, that's the wrong...
Variety?
What?
Variety?
Outside the box, variety, yeah. And I thought it was pretty neat.
What we can do is do some high-level renditions of just the front and stay away from the details on the back right now because I think the back will blend and be happy to... I think either way, we can make a strong presence of the architecture of the building. I think the site adds a little more character with skewed option.
Yeah. Who are our neighbors right there? Who's our neighbors in those three buildings?
Who?
Which direction? The only ones I can see, the ones that share the same block.
Dunright.
Dunright. Dunright is the whole thing?
Dunright.
Dunright, Ace. I think it's called Ace, right? It's owned by, what's his name? Aluminum Components, Extrusion, ACE. Traders on the other side. Other side of the road.
Used to be Nylon Transmission, but now those two...
Yeah, Nylon used to be there too.
Now those two buildings are part of Dunright's operation.
You know, you might want to float that by them, so, right.
I think they should go to Industrial Park and then just have the whole site for municipal centers.
I don't think we have a big enough segment, Industrial Park.
In all its schemes, we are screening those neighbors to the west with the storage.
Yep. Where's the fuel on this one?
It'd be in the same location as that one.
Oh, okay.
I kind of like it skewed a little bit. There's more room instead of having the parking right next to the road.
Yeah.
It's back just a hair, I think.
Shane, why don't you ask for a straw poll?
What I would offer is, we'll meet his requirement, but skewed.
Well, because we did it last week a couple times.
When I, when I talked to John, I said, I'd like to see the Frank Lloyd design in there. And also, I like to see this, when I see the structure, it be a modern structure.
Right, right.
Because all you go to Schofield Avenue, still we are setback and old building, old style designs. And I think we should bring it back and left the community with this structure. You know, if, we have to go with this, not to be corollary to Schofield Avenue, let it be, that's okay, but still, the principle should be the same.
I agree. And in the last thirty, fifty years, whatever, instead of being dated right away.
Right.
Is that what you're saying, that? I agree.
And that's a great exercise that we do with the public workshops. We have different options and different images and we can have them vote on. And it's part of tying it all together.
I...
I apologize.
That's fine.
How about we do the straw, when you give us the elevation?
Yeah. Yeah, I'd love to see an elevation. That's a good point. Because from a bird's eye, this makes sense. But an elevation from the road, you know...
Perfect.
Yeah. That's a great idea. That's a great idea. Currently Dale's West Lanes is parallel, right? Yep, okay. Right.
But I like the idea that you don't have so much parking right on Schofield Avenue. I like these buildings that you see the building or whatever, but the parking is not right in front. Even tried to give Cool Vantage convinced that you should put in parking.
Back. How much, how much public parking is there? Is that the green public parking?
Yeah.
Right?
We're just showing one. I forget the total number of parking. We got, I forget the number, but this covers employee and public parking, all of them.
Yeah, so, you know, we went three times bigger on the building. Did we go three times more in the parking?
I don't have that answer.
Okay. Just wondering.
You see, the problem I see with this, with the lot and structure and everything else in there, there isn't enough setback. It's too close to the road.
We have a lot of overflow. We have a lot of overflow now, especially at night. People can park to the side. I don't see the overflow here.
The setback of building?
Setback from the street.
Oh, it's the white border you're seeing around the site?
Yes.
That's a setback.
Ah.
We're, we're more, yeah, we're, the parking actually could be closer technically.
The white boundary is the building setback.
The building setback.
What?
Building, the building is too close to the road.
So what is the distance of that white on Schofield Avenue?
Twenty feet.
The new zoning code allows for institutional, which is what we would be considering, to be closer to the...
The office part of the building is over sixty foot back. It's more than six. The parking lot's sixty feet plus twenty foot. So you're eighty feet back from Schofield of the office.
From the southern line or from the right away?
Right away.
Oh, wow.
Okay.
Right away. That, that white you're seeing on the bottom there, horizontal section, that's the twenty-foot setback. Parking lot's sixty-six feet, so you're eighty, you're eighty-six feet back.
That's very deceiving then, yeah.
Eighty feet is good distance.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I'm sorry, Nate, go ahead, you.
I just wanted to echo what Trustee Maloney and Vice President Sagami said. I'd like to see this with maybe a little bit of flair or something a little out of the box. Being a complete nerd, I love some of the old artistic feel of some of the city halls. And I understand that we're operating within a budget and everything, but just some way to set us apart, I think, would be really well-received and make us a little more unique in this area of the state.
I did ask that as a team of, and they all went blank.
We didn't know what that would be.
Yeah. It was more than historic in the city than you would have realized.
Industrial, right? Industrial modern? Yeah, that's how I think it should look.
Frank Lloyd.
Frank Lloyd, yep, yep. Yeah, not just that brick and mortar and then the, you know, the church roofs, yeah. I think we kicked this can pretty good, so...
We did, but there's one other question then, or one other point. I think we, it's been kind of discussed in the last couple of board briefers that we've put out. The town operation, the town office and boardroom, I guess.
Stays that safe.
Remain that safer rather than come over here, as well as the municipal court. That was one of the last discussions we had where we were thinking of bringing them over here, but there's been some sentiment. And in fact, the town board is actually going to have, they actually have it on their board agenda tomorrow night.
I know you're looking right at me. I'm the only person that brought it up.
Well...
And I get it. I'm fine with that. I'm totally fine.
I'll look over there.
Yeah, go on. I thought it was a good idea. I failed miserably.
Well, I don't think that was a unique idea to you. There was some other sentiment from the beginning on that that doesn't, that wouldn't make sense potentially. But spoke also to the municipal court judge last week and she was not in favor of moving over. She preferred to stay at the public safety building, so... Now, I guess if we really wanted to...
No, we can let it go.
We can say, we want you to move here because we're furnishing the facility, but then we're kind of duplicating some area as well.
I think it's worked well.
I'm good to go. I'm done. Let it go. Break, break, break.
Well, I just, I just want that to be put out there to the whole board so that we're...
Loud and clear.
Because we can remove the square.
Loud and clear.
Obviously, the boardroom stayed the same, but their support rooms have been deleted from the plan and program.
Okay.
Is your cost estimate include the equipment and the furniture?
One hundred, well, the cost estimate we give you will be turnkey one hundred percent. Legal fees, our fee, every fee related to the project.
Yeah, but we like to have the cost of the furniture and the equipment separate. We want to see...
John, you're going to... They're all line items, but when we give it to you, you'll see facility costs, all the... Every piece will be broken up differently.
And what is the going rate right now in the market per square foot for this type of a structure?
That'd be structure only?
Well, probably...
Yeah, the bids are coming in right now, anywhere's from ninety dollars to a hundred for just the building square foot.
Just building?
Yeah.
That does not include equipment or furniture?
Correct, FF and correct. It includes equipment, you know, like the crane and that would be added on to those numbers.
Okay.
But what I'd like to do is, we'll, we know the plan. I'll update that cost estimate for your next board meeting. Keith can present that cost estimate so you can, you guys can be tuned into where the numbers are at today.
And at least a front elevation?
Yep.
Okay. Good.
I think that just did a different, you know, did an actual...
Can I, I recommend the skylight in the lobby area. Bring a lot of natural light in there.
Wow. Okay, any other questions from the trustees? John, thank you for your information. We'll go with the updated, updated pictures.
The only related comment then is that the meeting that would have normally taken place on Wednesday on planning for the facility is gonna, is not going to be happening this week since we've gone over this today.
Yeah.
And we'll be meeting again with John two weeks from Wednesday.
Okay.
I'll send a confirmation out, but just since everybody's here, I think that would participate in that meeting, just so they know.
At this level or during the day?
During the day.
Okay.
Normally, I know the chiefs attend and...
Sitting in the lounge.
I will send an email, but just...
Thank you.
All right, moving on, item number six, minutes from previous meeting.
So moved?
Seventeen, twenty, board meeting by Maloney.
Second.
Seconded by Feeny. On the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Correspondence, we have nothing. Number, reports from minutes from board committees and commission. We have number eight, eleven, twelve, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and eighteen.
Some moves?
Motion to acknowledge.
Oh, yeah, motion to acknowledge.
Acknowledged by Feeny, seconded by Emily. On the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Minutes are acknowledged. Reports from departments, number twenty, administrator, Keith.
Um, I don't know. Well, it's been my report to the board and also into the packet, but it's just a couple of major things here. I just wanted to give a little bit of an update on Camp Phillips Center, probably in addition to what was in the packet. There was a conference call this afternoon with FDG and Attorney Sweeney. There was some uncertainty or confusion, I guess, as to when the DNR expected to have the occupants of the two retail sites debulged. That's supposed to happen at some point during the public hearing, as I understand it, based on today's phone call. We've talked about, I gave CDA and plan commission a bit of an update on this last week, but this project's been scaled back to developing, proposal developed the properties that front State Highway twenty-nine. It's three parcels that were nominal, forty acres apiece. And then there would be two big boxes in one other development site. I guess it's undetermined if there's a occupants for that one yet. The individual permit application to the DNRs could be submitted tomorrow or Wednesday. We'll then have to wait for DNR to determine that the permit is complete. So if there's questions or things that they don't feel are addressed properly, they would ask for some additional information. Once they had determined it to be complete, then they would schedule a public hearing, which then we would have a little bit of discretion as to when that would be scheduled. In the meantime, FDG is looking at the latest financial projections. They said last week that they were putting a list of questions together for FDG. According to the phone call today, FDG has been contacted by LRZ and they're, you know, following up on some of those questions. So as we work through that, we would then have some other discussions with FDG. And also with LRZ, I guess, in putting together a development agreement. So at some point before the public hearing, we're going to want to have a meeting with the board and CDA talk about what some of those criteria are going to be. And again, there's going to be, one of, one of the things that we want to get answered in this whole process is what is the village's expected contribution? I know that the financial test or the financial constraint is that we want to make sure that whatever investments or contributions we make in the, in the TIF one overall are paid off by the time the TIF is retired in 2031. So LRZ is aware of that constraint and obviously that's the way we want to manage it financially anyway. So still a lot of things to be determined yet. Unfortunately, we're not, you know, a whole lot farther than I suppose we were last Friday. I just, I know we're all getting anxious and we want to know what's happening with, you know, the, we want to make sure that the eyes dotted, peace crossed here as well, so. I don't know if there's any questions on that. We did mention that we might be trying to schedule a special meeting for that sometime in the next few weeks, maybe even into the first part of September, based on today's conversation. The other thing was any follow-up on the sports facilities presentation, which I know several trustees were attendants for. I think as staff talked about the presentations, there wasn't really a good tie-in, I think, between the, the larger project, the indoor events facility and the, and sports facility and the baseball facility. And of course, we've talked and President Sparks has talked with municipalities as we've gone to meetings at McDevco that certainly there's no expectation that it's located in Weston. And I think the site for both facilities, with the thought being that there could be some synergy, that site would still need to be selected. Whether or not this whole thing gains any traction, I think that still remains to be seen. I know that the thought was that there would be, you know, maybe a certain group would be championing these, these projects going forward. We don't know what that's going to look like yet. We are going to be talking about this with the McDevco or the municipalities group at a McDevco meeting that's coming up in September on the tenth. I have tried to contact Lance at the county to give his thoughts and follow-up, but we haven't gotten connected yet. So kind of on a holding pattern with that one. I don't know. More, if you've got anything you wanted to add on that, but.
No, I just, you know, the presentation that we went to, it was basically the recommendation that the move going forward with was trying to consolidate the two projects, the event center and the outdoor facility, manage it under one group. And then, you know, they said it's going to take, I mean, the earliest something would happen, I think, was 2022 that they talked about. But discussing how it would be funded regionally, how that would look, they put these together before Victus has. And so until we get some more information, you know, and they start narrowing it down. But I think the important thing was that they understood this needed to be regional, it needed, you know, should be under one umbrella. The event center will cash flow, the sports fields will not. But if you combine the two, it would have a positive cash flow. So I think that's where it needs to go, wherever it ends up being located, but has to be regionally funded and supported. And the initial estimates are at least forty million economic benefit back to our local community. And that would affect Weston as well as all the other communities, so. I was happy that it was well attended. I think we had representation from just about every community, most of them in Marathon County. So that's good. And then we'll see where Victus goes next with it as they dig a little further and see how, you know, site location management overall and the funding mechanism. You know, we're way too early to have any decisions made, but I think the direction that they're going is appropriate in funding and putting this together on a regional basis, so.
Okay, just unless you have any questions for me, I don't have anything to add. My reporter, what's on your mind here?
All right. Thanks, Keith. Clerks, Sherri.
I have the 2020 census update for you. I also have it under new business. So I have a resolution under new business, but just to start out, as far as the timeline, the census is upon us. And April first, 2020 is, is census day. And we met with a representative last week from the census, from the U.S. Census Department, and he asked us to partner with them again. We did this ten years ago. Jen kind of took the lead on it at that time. They want us to help them get the word out so we can get our accurate population count. And I think it's important that we get that information out. Part of it is putting, putting together a complete count committee, which means that we'd want to use this committee to get to areas in the village where maybe we would find people not participating. We have a lot of transient people here, so maybe we'd want to have a committee of some sort, people on this committee to focus on how do we get to those people so we can get them to fill out their information for the census. So that's what the complete count committee is about. And do you want us to continue to participate? Like I said, I think it's a good idea. We've done it before. And again, the resolution is under new business. And we can talk a little bit more about that at that time if you'd like.
Any questions for Sherri? All right, finance. Jess, you already, you already went through it the last week. We've got anything to add?
We got the rest of the funds. We will be looking at the rest of the village funds to be bringing back with their budgets next time.
Any questions for Jess? Fire EMS? Matt, you have anything?
We've just been busy with budget stuff right now. Just an update on the fire on Camp Phillips. Came in right at lunchtime last week. We had three ambulances out, so we only had two people left in the district. Both myself and Josh, we responded from remote to the fire. Requested mutual aid because we, all of our resources were out. And initially it was just smell of smoke. Turned out when we got on scene, the fire was blown out of the roof already. We made entry rapidly, called for Riverside for an engine. And then as soon as we turned onto Camp Phillips and saw the flames, we upgraded that to a Mavis box, which included an engine from the city of Wasa and an ambulance from. We made a rapid hit on the fire. It was upstairs, started in the kitchen, which then found its way up into the attic and across the, basically the entire attic space upstairs. Rescued a lot of cats. There was, I think, nine cats in the apartment complex. And a very large boa constrictor that were all brought out. Everything went well, other than we, we had limited resources when it came in. Ever Spencer did a phenomenal job. No, they really did. They helped a lot with getting the road shut down and getting traffic shut down. You know, that time of day on Camp Phillips Road coming off of twenty-nine is crazy. And we shut down Camp Phillips in front of the apartment complex so that we could catch hydrants and lay holes. But no, really, props to Ever Spencer for what they did, just in helping with all the displaced family that were in there. Red Cross was called for, for those people to help with any displacement issues and, and, you know, getting them some semblance of back into normal living areas. It sounds like they're going to put a new roof on and hopefully be done sometime before it gets really cold. It was, it should, it could, it would have went really, really, really bad. But because of the quick knock on the fire, it was knocked down and kept to where it was, so.
Good job. Any questions for Matt? Clay, did he send over donuts to the PD?
Oh, I should have. What are donuts? Bagels, bagels are better, right?
All right, person. All right, Sean.
I did have a report in the packet if you have any questions. Otherwise, I think I noted the product center closed down for the season this Sunday. Unfortunately, the weather doesn't look favorable for this last week. But that's really it right now. And then we'll be Irish Fest this weekend at Kennedy Park. And it looks like the weather might work out for that.
Okay, any questions for Sean? All right, plan development, John.
I just have two things that I have under the special note that I just want you all to be aware of, just in case you didn't get a chance to read it. Tendentatively for your first meeting in October, you will be holding a public hearing for the draft wayfinding and entryway sign plan. Mark Boffers is taking CDA and PC comments from that meeting last week and will be giving me a new draft. I'll get that too as soon as I get that from him. But I will be scheduling that public hearing. And then I also wanted you to know that we do have a new one-one-nineteen population estimate. So if you run across it somewhere else, originally the DOA had, we only grew by like twenty-two people. And after we looked at the email further, they did not put any reconstruction in for us at all last year. So the number, he revised it, so instead of fifteen-four-sixty-seven, which is the one that's out there right now, it will be fifteen-six-thirty. So just so that you know that, if you see that, I don't know how long it takes for that to get, but it actually showed up in a plan that Mark was working on for me already, so I had him update that, so, just so everyone's aware. And that's an increase of one hundred and eighty-five people. So that's the other thing with the census that Sherri was talking about that'll be so important. Essentially, since that 2010 census, our DOA projections have like really way off. Earlier, after that initial 2010, I know I had talked with DOA before because their projections, we had already passed some of that. I don't know if Bart, I'm sure you remember that a couple of years ago. It was kind of messy, but those numbers are really important for grant funding, as everyone's aware, so.
Thanks, John. Any questions for John? All right, police.
Just brief staffing update. We are in a hiring process. We had ten applicants. Six showed up for the test. We are making accommodations for one of them to take the test during our physical, I believe, the test this third day. And we accepted a late application, if you don't have it right. So we'll do a lot of heat. We'll see what they do at physical. We're, we completed the sergeant promotion process. That person has not been named yet, but this commission meeting will be held soon to confirm that position. And we're looking forward to starting getting some of our staff back from, from Maloney, who's increased, starting to go back to town in September.
Thank you.
See, thirteen-hundred-and-twenty-four calls last month. We're running down five if I'm sure they were.
Yeah, thousand calls per month for the village in the summer. It's pretty typical. And a lot of those are some pretty special west of the beach. You can see a reason for the number of calls and some reasons to call today required. We're making some pretty good arrests.
Any questions for Chief Schultz? Okay, public works. Michael.
Yeah, I guess the street maintenance items are nearing an end for the year. Chip ceiling was done, but finished up a week ago Monday, or today, last week, Monday. The area by Mount Olive Church between Alderson and Jelnik on Park Ridge, that neighborhood, the final lift of asphalt was put on today. So that neighborhood should be driving a lot nicer moving forward. And then Thomas Avenue, staff's finishing up some drainage improvements, a little storm sewer work, and that should be paved then. Either yet this week or early next week. And that's pretty much it then for street maintenance items for the year. We have a couple of items later on in the agenda regarding some of our capital projects coming up as far as a design contract. And then the Harland lift station, Zinzar utility work should be starting, well, both of them have, well, the Zinzar utility bid opening is at the end of the month. And then likely probably an October build date. I've been in contact with Dan Wyleup and also Mark Hall, Hall, the builder for him, so. Kind of coordinating that, so it looks like it should be minimal disturbance to the golf course with the later in the year construction time there. Both of the plow trucks that we purchased should be hitting the assembly line at the first of September. There's hope that the single axle truck, we might actually be able to get in time to use it this winter. The other one probably won't get until spring. And then we had four interviews last week, Thursday and Friday, for the open mechanic position. Looks like, talk with Administrator Donna probably tomorrow. Looks like probably offering one of, one of them, they're, all four of them were great. I mean, it was, I guess, hear Clay talk about the struggles, and this was actually one of the first positions I can remember hiring where it, it was tough just narrowing down. We had fifteen applicants and maybe all but four were good candidates. And then you start having to nitpick who you wanted to kind of pick out of the bunch. So it was, it was a relief actually to see a good candidate pool this time around. Yeah, I guess, and then just trying to get sewer cleaning and staff staying on top of the, all the TDS line locates that are being requested, so.
Questions for Michael?
Those, those streets behind the Mount Olive Church, did anything happen to that? They were really pretty much here.
Yeah, so those are like on Park Ridge that comes off of Alderson Street. Yeah, those all got repaved.
Did you just patch it?
Uh, no, a complete overlay, the area between kind of coming down the hill where Shepherd Lane hits.
Yeah.
To the bottom of the hill, we completely removed the asphalt, added some base and put, you know, the two, you know, the binder and the wear course on there.
So you did pavement replacement?
Yeah.
I'll get back to that comment.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, technology. It's not here. Of course, on file. For twenty-nine, work product transmittals, July twenty-nineteen building permits.
Move to acknowledge.
Motion by Maloney.
Second.
Seconded by Feeney. On the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Consent agenda is, item thirty-one and thirty-two approve operators licenses and approve vouchers. Anybody want any of those removed? Otherwise, I'll look for a motion to approve both of those items, thirty-one, thirty-two.
So moved.
Motion by John.
Second.
Seconded by Sagami. On the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Ordinances, item number thirty-five.
Ordinance is item number 35. I'm not gonna read all this, it's in your packet. So it's ordinance number 19-009, which amends, makes amendments to chapters 14, chapters 10, chapter 18, chapter 34, and chapter 54.
Move to approve.
Motion by Jean.
Second.
Second by Feeny. On the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Proposed.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number 36, ordinance number 19-010, ordinance to approve the rezoning of 1.326 acres of land from INT Institutional to AR Agricultural and Residential located south of the intersection of Ryan Street and Weston Avenue in the village.
Move to approve.
Motion by Maloney.
Second.
Second by Jean. On the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Proposed.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number 37, ordinance number 19-012, an ordinance to amend section 94.16, 16 parent 1 of the village's planning permission.
Move to approve.
Motion by Maloney.
Second.
Second by Jean. On the question.
I'm sorry, I hear the second.
Jean.
Thank you.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Proposed.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number 38, ordinance number 19-13, an ordinance to amend chapter 58, nuisances section 50.102, parent D, parent 9, compliance inspection, parent G4, safety and sanitary maintenance of property, number K, lawn and yard maintenance, parent M3, non-summarary abatement by village.
Move to approve.
Motion by Zagami.
Second.
Second by Feeny. On the question, all in favor say aye.
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 Proposed. Motion carried. Item number, ordinance 39, or number, item number 39, ordinance number 19-14, an ordinance to repeal in chapter 90 of the code of ordinances in the area of Weston titled vegetation and amending, renumbering, and recreating a new chapter 90 of the code of ordinances named vegetation.
So moved.
Motion by Feeny.
Second.
Second by Jean. On the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Proposed.
Aye.
Motion carried. Resolution under number 40, resolution number 2019-23, a resolution amending the village fee schedule.
So moved.
Motion by Jean.
Second.
Second by Feeny. On the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
John?
Yeah, I said aye.
Oh, sorry. Proposed.
Waiting.
Motion carried. Yeah, there's a delay, so I was waiting. Okay, item number, item number 41, resolution number 2019-24, resolution to partner with the Census Bureau for Census 2020 through the formulation of a complete count committee.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Maloney, second by Jean. On the question.
I have a question. I will need some help with putting this committee together. And some of the people that should be a part of this committee are people that are, that are leaders in the community, that can maybe help us do this outreach, to whatever this committee feels is where we need to do the outreach. And the recommendation from Representative Wally was that maybe it would start out as you and I, and we would just, we had to start somewhere.
That's fine.
And maybe we sit down, okay, we talk about where we want that outreach to be, and then come up with some contacts and move from there.
Okay, that's fine, call me in.
Okay, sounds good.
I may regret that, but. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Anything else on the question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Proposed.
Aye.
Motion carried. Nothing on unfinished business, new business. Item number 43, class A B, or class A beer and liquor license for Weston Wine and Spirits, 2801 Schofield Avenue, Weston.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ernley, second by Jean. On the question.
Aye.
All in favor say aye.
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 Proposed. Motion carried. Item number 44, cigarette license for Weston Wine and Spirits, same business at 2801 Schofield Avenue.
So moved.
Motion by Jean.
Second.
Second by Feeny. On the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Number 45, installation of batting cage at Kennedy Park.
Move to approve.
Motion by Jean.
Second.
Second by Feeny. On the question, all in favor say aye.
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 Proposed. Motion carried. Number 46, installation of equipment shed at Kennedy Park.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Maloney, second by Jean. On the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Number 47, request to use village property. Who has this?
So I put this on because we've had a couple of recent requests on, I guess they're fairly unusual perhaps. One was a request by a person that makes wreaths to cut boughs from trees on village property, the property to the east of Ryan and south of Weston Avenue, that park property, formerly owned by Ed Proaska. And the other was, I think, a request that Sean received to cut hay from the, this golf course park, that, at that area. We don't have a clear-cut policy on handling these things, though. We did just lease the property off of Zinzer and Weston Avenue for cropland. But in terms of other requests like this, I know the other thing that comes up periodically is cutting down trees or dead trees from village property. I don't, I guess I just put it out there because I don't know if we want to have a policy on that or just simply not entertain these kind of things unless...
I would, I would go first and say not entertain. You're just opening yourself up, especially to boughs. I mean, there's a lot of money to be made there. Now, who's first? I got to do it last year, I got to do it the last three years, I get the, I get first pick in the fourth year. It's just, I don't think we want to play in that arena.
Right.
I just don't. And, you know, we, somebody, we let somebody go take a tree, well, you let my neighbor take a tree, so I thought I could take a tree, and then my other neighbor thought he could take a tree, so, I mean, just thinking, oh, where all the trees are going, you know? I thought this tree was, I thought this tree was dead. Oh, no, I just cut it down, you know, so. I, I think we should just, no entertaining at all, no policy. That's my one thought.
Well, right, I guess renting the property for, you know, crop use or what, that was a whole different thing, but to have people just going in and, you know, cutting boughs or, you know, whatever, I don't, I don't think it's a, where do you stop it?
I agree.
Yeah.
I think it's not.
Is that good enough?
Yeah, good enough.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, item number 48, award engineering design contract for Weston School Neighborhood Reconstruction Project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Maloney, second by Zagami. On the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
I have abstaining from 48 and 49, so ITech and DIAF were part of them.
You hear that? He's abstaining from 48 and 49? Trustee Ziegler?
Got it.
Thanks, John.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
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 Proposed. Motion carried with one abstention. Item number 49, award 2019 sanitary sewer cleaning and televising.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Jean, second by Barb. On the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried with Ziegler abstaining. Number 50, award radio signal test contract to IPS for SCADA upgrades.
Move to approve.
Motion by Maloney.
Second.
Second by Feeny. On the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Aye.
Motion carried. Number 51, approve submission of grants for upcoming capital improvement projects.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Maloney, second by Jean. On the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number 52, update on proposed Business 51 roadwork.
So moved.
Motion by Feeny.
Well, update, who's gonna update us?
I guess the update was that, I guess it's more of a discussion, not really necessarily anything to be moved or motion for. But Keith and I, as well as several members from Rothschild and Schofield and the DOT got together, what was it, two weeks ago now?
Yes.
And kind of went over the proposed plan that the DOT has for Business 51. And with the two-phase approach, I guess there's two key takeaways. One is that it's really not, according to their processes and the steps they have to follow, there's really not a whole lot they can do to expedite the project. So the option of not doing the overlay and getting the bigger project sooner, I said, really isn't an option. If anything, they can maybe get a year sooner, so instead of 2025, maybe 2024, well, that'd still mean, you know, five more years of a bad road out there. And they did say with the way their funding works, by doing phase one, they were able to defer a few other upgrades that they're supposed to do to curb ramps and other areas by promising that phase two will happen. So if, so basically by doing phase one, they have to do phase two in order to meet other federal guidelines regarding pedestrian accommodations and other upgrades that they should be doing to the road as part of this project, so.
Are they still looking at it, the municipality's taking it over after they do it?
So that's a separate discussion.
Right. You need to talk about it.
It, it was brought up, so, but at this point, I don't know, if you want to take...
I don't, until we know the scope of what they want to do or propose for the later project, they, they still haven't finalized that, and of course, they have different terminology, pavement replacement versus reconstruction, and I...
That's, that was my question. I think we should ask them what they do, what they mean by pavement replacement. What is?
Yeah, so pavement...
You explained to me pavement replacement, you just did it.
Yeah, yeah, pavement...
I understand that.
Yeah.
For this case, I do not understand it because I don't think pavement replacement gonna do the job.
No, and we did talk about the crushed concrete underneath there and how that really should be removed and new base should be brought in, which would make it a reconstruction versus the pavement replacement that they're proposing. I, I guess that's still a topic to be debated.
Yeah, I don't think they're far enough into it to know what they're gonna ultimately recommend, so over the next couple of years, we'll find out.
Last a year or two.
Yeah. Well, the overlay's gonna last a year or two, but, but they're gonna refine, I guess, what they're gonna recommend going forward, I guess, is the message we got.
I should hope we don't take it.
Any other discussion on it? It calls for a request to acknowledge, but I don't think that's necessary, it's just a discussion point, so.
Yeah.
Come up again if they get closer. Okay, moving on, remarks from president. I have, I don't have anything, future items. Next meeting date would normally be on the first Monday, but that's Labor Day, so we'll have no meeting on September 2nd. Our next meeting will be on September 9th, for a special board of trustees meeting at It didn't have remarks from trustees, but any trustees have anything they would like to share?
No, no. Do you know?
Okay, we know the planned business.
I'm good.
We will adjourn the meeting until September 9th at 5:30 p.m. Please adjourn.
Good night, guys.
Thank you, John.
Thanks.